Long run, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I always, I've worked, I've worked with enough big companies and sometimes they're like.
All right, if I could get a motion that we only discuss those items we went into closed session for, three items, one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry where no previous announcement has been made, and two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, appointments to town manager and appointments to boards.
I move.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please ma'am?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Quantz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, we'll do the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Councilman Clark and followed by the invocation by Councilman East.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, we come together this evening with thanks for all you do in our lives and in our community. We ask for your continued guidance in all matters. In your name we pray, amen.
Okay, I'd like to welcome all the guests and visitors that are here tonight and online too also, but thank you all for coming out. Okay, so first we have a modification for public sessions, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we modify the public agenda to add a item, which would be after the public comment period before the consent agenda for two resolutions, is it two separate resolutions, for appointments to boards and commissions?
Second.
Is that, was that good enough, just to be clear? Thanks.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Quantz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move to the presentations. Our first presentation is U.S. Army's Freedom Award. That will be Officer Dooney, if you'd like to come forward, please. You can face us, it's fine.
So, for those who aren't aware, I'm a First Lieutenant of the U.S. Army Reserve. Not only do I work here for the town of Pulaski, I am a military police officer and for the United States Army as well. When I first started my employment here, I was doing that and I was wrapping up college. My first year of employment here, Sergeant Dickerson was my primary supervisor. I had an FTO over me and at one point I had a corporal over me. However, Sergeant Dickerson was the most consistent of all of them for me and handled my scheduling and working around my military time and also finding time for me to get vacation and just take time off of work in general to find that work-life balance to balance two careers at once. There's an organization for the Department of Defense called the Employer Support and the Guard Reserve and what they like to do is take time to recognize supervisors as well as agencies that care about reserve members. It's very common for police officers working for various agencies and also in a reserve component or the National Guard to be fired and basically mistreated because of their military obligation. Here in the town of Pulaski, I don't get that at all. I'm treated very well by my department and I put Sergeant Dickerson in the war, for this award to thank him for making it easier on me to do both. So what it is, it's a, it's called the, I believe the Patriot Award, I'm not sure what the actual name of it is. It keeps changing. But it's recognizing Sergeant Dickerson for being a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force.
I want to stay up there.
Wait a minute.
That's awesome. You don't get away that easy. You tried.
With every reward.
Yeah.
All right. I think the lesson from this is stop winning so many awards, Sergeant Dickerson.
We're very proud of both of you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I was going to, under the manager's comments, share with you all an incident involving our police department and the Gatewood facility, which obviously is a part of the holdings of the town. But since Chief Niese is here, I'd like to, with your permission, call her to come forward and just share with you a very potentially damaging experience that we had but the helping hands of some volunteers, some citizens, really made the situation much, much better. So Jill, why don't you come forward and share that with the council?
I'm not going to read this whole letter, but I did need it for the names of the folks involved. So, I don't know how many of you know that there was an incident that we had at Gatewood, July 10th, it was about 11 o'clock in the morning, where I was actually in Miss Burton's office when the call came in over the radio that we had an assault in progress that had happened at Gatewood. As you know, that's a good drive for us and we try to, we try to stay close, but it's kind of a dangerous road to drive on as well, especially at high speeds. So, it's uncommon for us to get that kind of call up there, to be, to be honest. So, we headed up that way and as it turns out, there was a gentleman, not from our community, who had, it turns out maliciously wounded one of the Gatewood employees. And when our officer arrived, he was immediately attacked by this gentleman, who was quite a large individual and had quite a bit of strength and all our officer could do to respond to the incident was basically just hold him until backup arrived, which headed to Gatewood was going to be a few minutes. So he was a little bit worried about the situation and luckily, there were some PSA workers that were up there at Gatewood, Scott Saunders, Kevin Johnson, Nicholas Edwards from Public Service Authority, and then Stephen Malloy, I hope I'm saying his last name correctly, from Gatewood, immediately saw the incident and came to office, it's Officer Stone, came to Officer Stone's assistance, helped him contain the gentleman, detain him, and had it not been for them, honestly intervening, Officer Stone advised me that he felt like that incident would have turned out to be a deadly force incident. So, it was incredibly dangerous. At their own peril, they intervened and it was courageous. So, we wanted to recognize them here and hopefully we'll get the chance to do that at the county as well.
And also, if people don't know, Stone is not a small man.
No, and he's, no, and he's in great shape and.
He can usually hold his own.
Yeah, yeah. And when you hear a call like that happen and those of us who are a few minutes away, it really is very difficult to sit and wait. Everyone was on pins and needles and had it not been for those gentlemen, I do think they would have turned out differently. Not only for the gentleman involved, but maybe for our officer. So, we'd like to thank them.
Stone did have a black eye.
Yeah, I heard. He's wearing that Shiner Prouse, right?
I don't know.
He was wearing it. Thank you.
For letting her do that one.
Yes, yes, thank you. All right, next we'll move to the Pulaski Area Transit, Monica Music. Hello again.
Hello, I hope everybody's doing well this evening. So I'm just going to start out just by running over some, just highlighting some stuff. So at the end of May, DRPT's media staff came and did some footage of the transit. They rode around, took pictures of different places in the town with some, with the drivers and the dispatchers. And in August, they're going to start vamping back up discovered transit again and will be promoted several times over three or four months during that time. So we'll be sharing that on our Facebook page and then the town can also share that if they would on their Facebook page. One exciting thing of that is one of our longtime drivers was interviewed, so they're going to do a featured session on him. So, St. Jerry's one of our first drivers that started, so I'm excited to see that when that comes out. Also in May, we had our golf tournament and it was very good this year. We had 17 teams and 16 hole sponsors. I heard a lot of feedback that they liked that we had it in May, so I've already set the tournament next year for May. I think it's the 15th, it's the third Wednesday in May. And then we, we're still going out in the community at different places to promote transit and help people understand how the different routes work to help them with that. And with that being said, ridership continues to grow each month, so we're very pleased with that. And then I think you all should have what DRPT awarded us for 2024 and I'll just go down through that list. That was all the different grants that we had applied for. So, the first one was the PAT operating and so we was awarded $827,843. And then the local match is $187,541. The next item on there is capital maintenance item for the, an engine. That vehicle didn't meet its mileage nor its life expensancy. So we were able to put in a grant that they had this year to have a small engine repair done. And so, we was awarded that for $20,000 with match of $3,200 for that. And then the three replacement vehicles that we had talked about, so those three vehicles will cost $383,070. And the local match of that would be $61,291. And I feel it's very important that we accept all three replacement vehicles because right now, maintenance is, when Jennifer talks about the budget, you'll see our maintenance is overspent and that's due to not having replacement vehicles over the past couple of years. And we've talked about that, we'll put those vehicles, the three that we get rid of, we'll put those on the gov.deals.govdeals.com and sell those. And we can, Jennifer posts them on Facebook and then we'll watch it and then, not on Facebook, but on that website. And then, when the deadline comes, if we haven't reached a price that we want to accept, we can extend it. We don't have to put it there. But with that being said, just as a reminder, anything that we make over $5,000 has to be sent back to DRPT and then that money is then returned to the FTA. So really, we'll, if we sell those vehicles, there would be $15,000 for that match money for those. And we had talked prior to submitting that grant that match money would need to become, you know, would come from the town of Pulaski and all three of these vehicles will be used in the town of Pulaski. And the other thing we had put in for was three replacement computers and monitors and we were approved for that at $4,800 with local match of $768. And then with our TDP study and our microtransit study, DRPT decided that they were going to fund that through RTAP, which means there's no luck, no local match money needed for that, that it'll be 100% funded through the RTAP grant. And I talked with DRPT and Patrice said that they'll be in touch shortly to go over the particulars with that. So when those conversations start, Darlene and you all will all be involved through that whole process. So, as soon as that gets started, I think they've had some staff on vacation. So they will be getting back in the very near future to start that. And one other thing is last time I was here, we talked about some advertising, maybe on the outside of the vehicles. So I've checked around with a couple of different agencies. And from what it sounds like, if we want to go that route and start doing some advertising on the outside of the vehicles, I think the best route we'd go would be to do the window clings on the side of the buses. They have those side windows or on the, out the back door. So, and I checked with Sign Systems because that's who did one of the wraps. So, they said they can do those window clings, it's just that if we move forward with that, we would just need to decide, you know, the cost for that and kind of said it would be like one to three months, three to six months and six to 12 months of how we would want to, how to charge local businesses for that. So I'm happy to look into that and we can try to do that to help offset some local match money. So before Jennifer talks about budgets, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to do that before she talks about the budgets.
I'm just curious, how, how much does the golf tournament generate for you guys?
Between $3,000 to $3,200, $3,300. This was the, actually the best tournament we've had in a few years and I heard a lot of people say it was because we had it in May instead of, before everybody started taking vacations, so.
Quick question, has there ever been a time where we've run, or y'all have run buses from here to like the State Park or something like that? And I was just thinking, in the summer, that might be a, a way, you know, on Saturdays or Sundays or something like. I'm just curious if that had ever come up as a, because I was just saw that Marion's having their big Hungry Mother Festival next weekend and they're running buses back and forth from town to Hungry Mother, trying to get people off the road. And I was thinking that State Park, maybe Gatewood, I, I'm not sure what would be the best option, but it seems like that could be, just like we run people to the mall and stuff like that, that that might be a, a way, you know, a sort of a, something you could potentially earn money on, but it also just would be a real nice service for the town.
Since I've been in my position, we haven't and, and to be honest, I'm not sure if the previous transit manager had done that or not.
You may, you may have and forgive me if you did. When, when will the, the microtransit study begin?
So, it's, that has already been approved since some DRPT staff was on vacation. So Patrice and they'd be getting with us in the, in the very near future to, to start that.
So, do you, do you, do you have any idea how long that takes, the study itself, or?
It'll take about six to eight months.
Six to eight months?
Yeah.
And then the only, the only, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So they'll start that soon because then, come December 1st, when those grants open up, that study will already need to be.
Completed.
Yeah, so that we all know whether to apply for that, if we're, if it's something to move forward with.
Okay, and then just one thing, it, it's a curiosity and, and actually Mr. Reese made me think about it. What, what's the deal with the transit bus stop, Pulaski Transit Bus Stop in Christiansburg? On, on 114?
So that.
Do we actually stop there?
So, are you talking about that one at the trailer court?
Yes.
So he put, we had nothing to do with that. He didn't want, we told him that we couldn't bring our buses up because that's a deviated fixed route. So we told him that that area was too big for us to come up in and there. So he just asked if we, if he put, he installed a shelter, he had his little bus stop sign made, so he, so.
But we have to stop, right? Is there, are there any safety concerns with that? I mean being, coming on and off of 114, which is.
The drivers had more concerns about that when they had to go up in there and then pull back out than, than it is where it is now.
So, so we're, we're transporting Christiansburg residents?
We take people there. I mean, and I, you know, I don't, I wouldn't know without asking the driver, but potentially we could bring people from Christiansburg back to Pulaski. Or we could take people that way, you know, over to the, the mall site to.
That's the route that goes to the mall for the, for like, and goes to the community college. So it's going, it's going past that.
Well, but it's stopping there too, I guess. I, I, it just doesn't, doesn't, I mean, I don't, I, I don't see Radford Transit stopping and.
They do, they go to the Walmart in Radford and Fairland.
It might be good though, because it could be extra if they did, I mean, that's Montgomery County money.
I, I, yeah, I was just curious.
So I will ask before Jennifer, oh, she's already here. I'll have to say this now before I forget, if I can just come back on October 17th and at that time Jennifer and I will have our 2025 budget ready to start presenting before the grants open.
Be here before we know it.
Yes, and actually I don't have a whole lot to add because she kind of covered most of it, but you do have the expenditure report and we are just fine right now. We're at like 74%, which is good for the end of June. As she mentioned, the repair line item is overspent and the projections that I have for the last quarter, it would be overspent, several of them will be, but savings on other line items, so my projections were still okay as far as the budget. The fares are definitely still down, we're getting about $2,000 a month in fares, so those are going to be about $6,000 less than projected. So, we know moving into 25 that we should decrease that.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir. On the local match for the grants, just to make sure I understand correctly, each, each one of those that are listed as local match, is the local match for all of those town and county or is there some other local match money involved in that?
Not other local match, other than the golf tournament, as you mentioned, which we thought would cover those small ones, the, the engine and the.
So it might be, might be $3,000 less or something of that nature.
And the 15 coming off of that for the sale of the vehicles.
So, roughly $230,000, somewhere in that range. Is that split half and half between town and county?
No, actually the county is more.
County is more of that.
They did approve the increase.
I was just trying to make sure I understood, just from a budgeting standpoint of what, what was the, based off of these, these amounts here, what would be the town's total amount?
That's just it, you approved $70,000 for, at 24 year, that's what that is.
And that $70,000 covers what's needed?
It, it should cover, yes. Between that and the county and some carryover.
Well, for some reason, unless I'm thinking about that wrong, there was 75 or somewhere around in that was the amount that we had done previously. And then there was a request for an additional amount for the vehicles. Is that, am I not thinking about that the right way, is?
Wait, yes.
No, I think the 70, I think it was, last year was 70 and then they asked for 77 and that included the vehicle match.
Didn't include vehicle match because we didn't know what it would be.
Oh, I see.
Have these numbers.
Oh, okay, I understand.
So now is the first that we are actually asking for that capital match.
Okay.
So the 70 was just operating.
Right, and then there's an additional for the vehicles.
Yes.
So that's what, so what's the amount then to say for, for both together? Is that, am I thinking about that the right way?
Well, actually, we're just looking for the match for the capital now, which would be 46, if we get the 15 and we have the three. So we would need 46,000 more in match for that capital, for the vehicles.
46 on top of the 70?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the county is, the county would be responsible then for the rest of it?
Well, the county already approved theirs.
Okay.
At the increased amount and then we have some carryover for the operating. So we do not have a commitment for those, you know, the capital, we had to apply for those first and so we talked about it the last time and now we're asking for the 46 for the capital.
Okay, so the.
And we asked the county, no.
I got you, so the total ask on the town, for the town is $116,000?
Yes.
And then the county is, is on 77,000? That, I, I just, I know I may be asking the same question 10 times, I just want to make sure I got that.
Yes, the county was 77.
Okay, so the, the total ask for the town is 116 and the county is 77 and that would match everything that's needed to be matched.
Yes.
All right, just want to make sure I had that right.
Yes, yes, you did.
Any other questions?
Well, and to get to your point, this is the first that I've been made aware of these numbers. They did mention to us at that meeting that they were applying for vehicle replacement, but I don't know that we had a dollar figure that was put out there. Right, so all I'm saying is this is not, this is, I guess, their request now, but hasn't been requested prior to this evening for that amount.
And you, and, and you need to, you said at your next meeting is when the budgets would be? For 25. And when does, when does that decision need to be made? All right, we've, and of course, we've already approved our budget for this upcoming year, which is finalized, which doesn't have that amount in it, correct?
And I'm not remembering the number three, but you probably did say three before with every number I've seen in the last several months. But I know at the time, you did not know if you were going to get them, but you were applying.
So in order, in order for us to approve that amount, basically it would require us going back to our budget and looking to make a change and find, essentially figuring out where that money would have to try and come from in order to approve it. Didn't I, didn't I understand that, I, I thought I understood that the microtransit study would need to be done or should be done prior to, because it could impact your, the way you do business, is that accurate? And, and the number of vehicles you have. And I think you'd mentioned that that should be done, or proposed to be done in December or whatever. Okay, so as far as the vehicle match goes, that, that study needs to be completed first, is that an accurate statement? Right, but if, if, if the microtransit, if that study comes back and says we have eight too many vehicles, then it's all a wash. I, I mean, so, so the, the playing field changes is my, and if I'm getting this wrong, please tell me. I'm just trying to understand. So, so micro is not micro?
You still use the same vans, you don't get a smaller van?
So help me understand how these buses are only used for Pulaski, given the routes that you run? That, these three buses you said are Pulaski buses?
Well, is that a large enough amount that we'll have to have a public hearing on it? If we decide to go forward?
No.
Okay. I, you know, and I want you guys to understand.
You want to get to do that when you increase the budget and this is.
Moving the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Making a transfer somehow. And I'm assuming that the council has the option of saying, only one bus or only two buses or all three? I mean, it's not an all or nothing kind of proposition.
And we, and we, I fully appreciate the fact that this is the quickest that you could give an exact number on those things. And just, hopefully you guys fully appreciate as well that the budget that was put together was on pins and needles as it was, right there with needs in place for employees and all other aspects of the town that there was trimming done to be able to get to the balanced budget that we have. And so, you know, in the scheme of things, you'd say, well, you know, it shouldn't matter, but it is, it may be a whole lot harder, you know, to, to pull that number than, than what anybody wants it to be. Right. But it sounds like, you know, at this point we've, well, at this point in time, I would think we'd have to, I guess, get information back to, as to what's possible.
So we need to let you know by October first? Is that right? Okay. It's, because I know what it sounded like was, we need to know now. So, but if we've got, you know, that gives us time to figure out if we can or what we can do, you know? Right. And then the, the money, okay, the other question is, when would the money be needed, given to you? Like, would that be in twenty-five? Because then that changes. You know what I'm saying, like?
Well, maybe we, you could follow up with us and let us, give us a timeline of when all these things, like, when we, when you need to, when you can order it, when you can pay for it, when the money's due, all that kind of stuff. And if you could, maybe give us a break, I mean, I'm assuming that it's a, it's fairly evenly split in that sixty thousand between, it's three, like, it's about twenty thousand for each one? Okay. The, the local match portion of it, so twenty thousand, however many dollars. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
I just have, I just have one. I, I'm just curious, and you may not have the information, but I think it would be useful for me going forward, is how many buses we have and the age and mileage? Just to kind of get a feel for, for, for what you're up against. Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Oh, um, before you go, want to give you, not always hearing good things about your drivers and your vans, I know that. But I had a lady in my store today, and the driver was a little early, he said, and he came in and helped her get her stuff back to the van and helped her out, and I was very appreciative that he was, he said, I've got time, I'm not rushing her, she's, and I just thought that was good, that, that showed that, you know, they do care about the, the people too, so. But he was, he was very nice, and I've talked to him before, he's a really nice guy. All right, so we'll, we'll move on then to, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, the streetscapes update, Scott, Scott Ost.
Well, good evening, council.
Hello.
Sure, this is a long awaited update for, you know, Streetscape's project, what we're going to, going to give you guys tonight, it's a little overview of some trees, some lighting. Uh, but before we get there, just kind of overall where we stand. As of today, talking with Mike, our engineer with Hurtin' Profit, VDOT has kicked back another set of about a dozen comments that he is trying to readily address to get back to them so that we can fully commit to that hundred percent submittal to completely push this through. Yeah, I think the last time we talked, I estimated probably fall would be a, a good timeframe, and that's probably about where it's still going to land right now. I know that today I did hear via Ms. Burcham that there was some, some concern by citizens about the shaping and, you know, how the sidewalks are right now. Some areas are stone, some are concrete. Uh, I, I am going to meet with Public Works in the next couple of days. We're going to walk Main Street and see if we can come up with some solutions to kind of help so that folks can get up and down the sidewalks into and out of the businesses that are there. Today was the first I'd heard of it, so we'll address that as quickly as possible.
You may want to also mention how many times we have had comments back and forth with VDOT. We never get all of the comments at one time.
No. Uh, I think this is probably at least the tenth or twelfth set, just in the ninety percent submittal.
Just curious, what kind of stuff are we here, I mean, what, what are the types of things that we're?
The comments could be anything from crosswalks to stop bars to the dreaded ADA accommodations that are constantly changing. That seems to be a moving target with VDOT for some reason. Uh, those are the big three right now. Those are, those are the hindrances. Because of the age of our town, the width of the streets, making the ADA accommodations for a landing zone and then a specific pitch for the ramps and having enough space to do that is the hard part. With taking out the streetlights and removing the poles, that buys us a little bit of space, but we still have to do some kind of, you know, fancy engineering to make all that happen. And, and Mike with Hurtin' Profit is doing an amazing job doing that. Um, the problem is, like I said, VDOT, Mike will make changes, we look at it, we send it in, VDOT asks for additional changes. So this is about the tenth or twelfth time we've gone through this with them on the ninety percent submittal.
With all those changes, you're saying that you still expect to start in the fall?
I expect bidding to go out in the fall, yes. You know, we're going to put it out for bidding, would be my guess. Unfortunately, that's.
Well, bidding goes out in the fall, so you probably would be.
Thirty, sixty days after before we start. So end of fall for December, January timeframe again, it looks like, estimated. And as soon as I have a better timeframe and can narrow that down, I'll certainly let you guys know.
And we can do that work in the winter?
As long as it's not below, I think with concrete, as long as it's not below about thirty-five to forty degrees, and there are additives they can put in to help cure at that temperature as well.
Everybody get out their hair dryers.
Need a lot of hot air on Main Street.
Without the hair dryer.
Without the hair dryer.
I heard that. But with that being said, you know, that's kind of the overall state of things, and some of the things we're going to work on this, we kind of address some concerns that we, we've heard.
Um, and I always encourage folks, citizens, anybody, if they have something that they see or something they want addressed, please call us and let us know. You know, hearing it secondhand or thirdhand sometimes takes a month, two months down the road. If you have a concern, don't hesitate to call us. We will certainly address it and, and do our best to remedy that as quick as possible.
Scott, just to, I'm, I'm sorry, were you?
Go ahead.
I don't mean to be rude. Just, uh, just a clarification, looking at the, like, the tree decision matrix, which I appreciate, the, uh, is this, you know, they're rated, I guess? So, who did, who, who did the rating?
What we did was we, Austin and Engineering, he did most of the work on this, actually got in touch with an arborist.
Okay.
And the arborist gave us a list of eight trees that typically go to municipalities. Um, after he gave us those eight, we picked four criteria. Aesthetics, what falls off the trees, size, and I can't remember what the fourth one is. Uh, but we had took those eight back to that same arborist and said, okay, here's our criteria, can you break down what you would suggest that we use? And out of those eight, we kind of came up with basically a top three that you guys are going to see tonight.
Okay.
We're not going to make you go through all eight of them. That, that's a little bit of a painful process.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I went ahead, didn't I?
It's okay, you're fine. But, so existing, and this is existing west, but what you look at is, that is the Jefferson intersection side of things, so that's up on that side. Existing, we to, on that side, we have, uh, seven trees, that's counting two larger ones in the crosswalk at the courthouse, and six light posts currently. Proposed, on that end, we go to only two trees and add two bio beds, which are going to be shrubbery instead of trees. We also jump to eight lights in that stretch. That end of Main Street from the courthouse to Jefferson is a little bit shorter than the courthouse to Washington, so the next side you see will actually have a few more lights, but bio beds and trees, we reduce the number considerably. And this does not take into account shown anything at the cross, crosswalk at the courthouse. The existing on the Washington end, as you can see, you're looking at still about five trees existing and roughly ten lamp post existing. The proposed new would be obviously considerable more lights. But we're still going to stick with basically two trees and then two of the bio beds, which would be more shrubbery, flowers, that kind of thing. Because every five years, those bio beds have to be dug out and everything replaced. Planting trees in them doesn't make a lot of sense if you've got to yank them out every five years. We want something that, you know, we can pull out, clean out the bio beds, and then put right back in.
Is it, is it odd that one side, the, uh, on the west side, the bio beds are directly across from each other, and then on the east side, they are?
I think they did that because of the length, the distance. You're looking at about roughly twenty-five feet versus, uh, what's that, thirty?
I was just trying to envision looking down the street if that would look.
We can still adjust those to some degree. Um, I'm sure Mike, among all the other things, would, would not mind.
I don't want to slow anything down. I, you know, I just, I just curious if there was a reason.
Uh, Mike could probably answer that question a little more, we really haven't addressed, we, our focus has been trying to get the, the ADA accommodations in the corners done correctly so that we can.
And so there's no, no trees planned for the beds in front of the courthouse?
Those are probably, we're going to stick with bushes and shrubs and flowers instead. You know, the, we could plant trees there, but.
I was, I was just asking.
Yeah. At, at this point, it's, it's shrubs and, and flowers, ten at the moment.
The intention to, to change that out to something that's a little more, a little lower maintenance, okay?
Yeah. The whole goal here is a lot less maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Less, a little more easily maintained, but also, as we, as you'll see when we get into some of the trees, that was one of the considerations as well. Right now, as you can see, these are two examples of the trees down on Main Street, and is actually the ones we have currently are a mix of Bradford pear, willow, and locust. All of them range somewhere around the fifteen to twenty feet tall mark, roughly. That's about where they top out. You can see, they, they kind of need a little attention. This was taken last week, not the photos were.
And I have to say, we do not have on staff anyone who was trained in pruning.
No.
Bushes or trees, uh, so that when we have done that in the past, we pretty much have just gone in and I, I hate to say it this way, chopped it up. So really, a lot of the discussion that we've been through has to do with how much maintenance is required and how they grow, and the frequency with which in that growing, they then need to be somehow pruned or cut back. So you'll see that as Scott's going through some of the slides, uh, as we've looked at different options for trees.
That one looks like it's out of a Dr. Seuss book.
I know.
Lorax.
Plus, I do know there's, at least two of those are very, very soft trees, they break easily, so.
So one of the, uh, this was the, the third ranked tree by the arborist that, that tends to get placed into municipalities. Uh, it's the crepe myrtle, and it hits about the same height currently that we have existing trees. Uh, the pros, um, the shape of it, it's fairly contained, no, it doesn't get real wide. Um, the color, obviously, would be a big hu, huge pro. The biggest con isn't necessarily, you know, when the flowers fall off, we'd have to clean them up. It's more, this actually, the crepe myrtle actually requires an arborist to kind of prune it. It takes that skill set to do it. Um, so that would require outsourcing to actually come in and prune any of the crepe, if we chose the crepe myrtle. The second tree, uh, the second ranked was a red bud. Color, again, colorful. The shape, still kind of that same round. Uh, the, the does take a bit of skill to maintain it as well. The biggest thing is it, I think it drops the flowers and leaves twice a year, so you would wind up, you know, you're going to have this stuff laying all over the sidewalks and the ground and any vehicles that park. So that would be another one of the downfalls there. It tops out at about fifteen feet, roughly. But it also, all of these require some kind of pruning, and, and, uh, the last that we picked was the genko. This was the, according to the arborist, the number one ranked tree that's placed in municipalities. A couple of reasons. It's very low maintenance. Um, it's very easy to prune and shape, minimal, I guess, uh, would not require any professional trimming. We can actually trim them with our guys and a little bit of training, probably. They're very low maintenance, they're narrow, they don't get as wide. They do top out about twenty feet. And they change color. It could be yellow, and depending on the season, yellow or green. That was one of the, the biggest things.
They're easy to clean up because they drop their whole, every leaf in one day, pretty much. They do. There's, there's one on Prospect.
Is there?
The biggest one I've ever seen.
Yeah.
Now, this one is huge. It's been there for probably a hundred years, and it'll turn yellow, and then one day you come down Prospect and the street's yellow.
You can, you can like really sit, stand there and watch it.
It just drops.
The leaves fall off, like.
You don't have to go back and clean it fourteen times.
One big time.
Yeah.
Are you able to make sure that it's a, a male or female tree? Because the, the one of them smells terrible.
That was, that is one of the things that we will go back and, and the arborist did touch on that. And once we make a decision on what to use, he will guide us in that, that decision as well. Pricewise, all of the, all three of these are anywhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighty dollars apiece. There's not a huge cost difference in, in any of those.
I didn't see in the, in the criteria, the root system, as far as, you know, what would do damage to sidewalks and stuff.
That's the reason all of these are picked for municipalities, not having an over-expanding root system. That was one of the things we discussed, or Austin discussed with the arborist as well. And from trees, we move to our existing lamp posts that are throughout downtown. These are roughly about sixteen, seventeen feet high. You can see they're in a little, little rough shape, uh, need some, some touch-ups and paint. All of these are top-mounted globes and lighting, and this is, this is what is currently existing. Uh, the company we reached out to gave us three alternatives. Uh, the first is called the Beale Street Series. And all three of these, I think you guys had all asked if we could find some that were overhanging, not up. So all three of the selections we have are the, so far, um, tonight are going to be overhanging.
So they like goes down instead of up into people's apartments?
Uh, the first one, the Beale Street, all of these are a little considerably taller. They're twenty-six or twenty-seven feet high instead. Well, they all are overhanging the pavement. This one is about seven feet extended out, and the picture in the bottom right corner there, as you can see, the orange line's about seven feet out from the lamp post, so it will almost cover a parking spot, uh, roughly. Uh, the advantage to having it higher, light projects further, so you're going to get it not just out over the street, but you'll get some back on the sidewalks as well. The second one was the Chicago Series, again, twenty-six feet high. This one is a shorter overhang, so it comes in at about roughly two, three feet. So it would basically cover about the gutter. And then the third one we had for you was the Cambridge Series, um, another one that is again about six and a half feet overhang, roughly a parking space, a little less. Twenty-seven feet high. I still do not have prices on these yet. We have reached out to the company about half a dozen times this week via phone and email and have not got the pricing on this yet. But as soon as we do, I will certainly forward that to all you guys, so that you know pricing, what we're looking at for any of these three. Uh, these were three examples we found that were all LED-based, all overhanging, kind of fit the criteria you had asked us to, to try and meet. Uh, the only thing I'm missing is price.
Is, is twenty-seven feet or twenty-six feet too high? How many is that like?
It's not a street light, if you look at it that way. That's about where most street lights hang.
Street lights meaning like traffic lights?
Like, no.
Road lights.
AEPs.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
Well, all the LEDs they put in down Route eleven.
On the, okay, gotcha.
Rough ballpark about that height.
Is there, I mean, is there, Mr. Reyes mentioned, uh, lights getting into the apart, upstairs apartments, which hopefully there'll be more as we move along.
Yeah. Um, at the twenty-seven foot mark, with all of them projecting down, I wouldn't think they would project out into the sides of buildings. I mean, you're going to get some residual that's just, yeah, if you live on a street corner somewhere, you've got a, a street light, you're going to get a little bit of residual light from it, but.
Not too bad as a light shining up.
It's not going to flare straight into it like, you know, the ones we have now that are straight up at sixteen feet.
Because that's, that's considerably higher, ten feet.
And Scott, explain who would be paying for the light fixtures, uh, if you change them out, yeah?
Yes, if we decide to do the light fixtures moving forward, because if we tried to add this into the Streetscape funding and have them do it, I think I'd explained this to you guys previously, that we would be very limited on style of light. We can have all the conduit run, all the wiring ready, everything in place, and then the town come up with the money to pay for the lights, and we could do that after, you know, Streetscapes, the concrete, everything's finished. If we pay for them, we have a lot more options as to what we can use, what we can do. Uh, I know that this company also specializes in historic districts. And those are kind of the series we picked, was to fit more of that category and more of that, that demographic. But we would actually have to probably come up with the money for next fiscal year to, uh, to pay for the lighting ourselves.
As the the conduit and everything that we're going to run to each would run to each one of these locations, will it give us access to basically do anything that we would need to do from the power off of these poles?
So we would, everything would be running capped, uh, based off the specs for streetscapes. And every light position that they have would basically be a box capped, covered at that, and then we would come back and add the base and hook up the lighting at that point.
Is that true of the trees as well, or just the lamp posts? The trees are going to be covered?
Trees are covered. Trees are in.
Just for the two, just for that block?
Yes, trees are covered and the bio beds are covered in the in the streetscape funding.
And I need to probably remind the council that, uh, when we started talking about having a different type of streetlight, and it was about the same time that I was talking with the county about letting us rent what I call the Third Street Parking Lot, the lot that goes on Washington and Third. The county agreed that if we came up with a different style of lighting that we wanted to use consistently in the downtown, uh, that they would match that, uh, with the facilities that they have, uh, which are include several parking lots and some other lighting. So, uh, whatever you all decide, I would think it would be a decision that would be continued in some type of a replacement plan, uh, for all of the lights, um, in the immediate downtown. Probably take us several years to make all that happen, but, uh, I think it's important that you all, uh, decide how you want that lighting to look, and particularly how you want it to shine on, um, the roadway, uh, and how much of the roadway, um, as we go forward. But tonight, because we're not going to have VDOT do these lights, we don't need to worry about it affecting when we can do the project. So since you've heard, we're still trying to get to ninety from ninety percent to a hundred percent on drawings, I didn't want you to think that your decisions about those two items would necessarily delay us.
But do we need to, I mean, my question is, the bases for each one of them, are they all the same? You know what I'm saying? Because if we put them in, put in the bolt pattern thing, if it's already.
The bolts will be put in after the fact.
Okay.
We we bring the conduit out, run it up, and we cap it. Whatever the bolt pattern is for whichever light we choose, it will not.
Okay, so it won't matter on that part, like we could.
Will not.
Okay. I was like, I could see a stub and something out and then it not work.
I'm sorry, Mr. I do think without saying pricing, I think it's very important that that w- we put our best foot forward on the lighting because that's going to be there for a long time.
And and I do apologize. Like I said, it was just we.
Oh, I know it's not.
Reaching out half a dozen times.
No, I know it's not. And I would, that I wasn't really concerned about having, and I was just making a comment without knowing pricing, but.
Well, the goal was to have it for you guys as well tonight, but I just didn't.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And then and then one, the only other question I have, on the side, the sidewalks, are they going to go back? They're going to be all concrete, is that true? Okay.
And I know not going to do the pebbley look, none of that is, it's going to be just concrete.
Sounds like a plan. Can I ask two quick questions?
Sure.
One, do these allow for like auxiliary power at the base? Like if we wanted to do, I mean, not, I don't mean, like, if we wanted to do street festivals or something, is there an easy way we could make that a part of the process?
I'm sure that after the fact, we certainly can go back and add to that.
Okay.
We, if you're talking about just a one-twenty outlet, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, just so that people can have, you know, lights or, you know, for music, you know, that kind of stuff.
Sure, we could find a way to step it down to where we can have just a regular outlet there.
Yeah, I mean, not necessarily open all the time, but just for special, you know, special events. And then the other thing is, since you brought it up, and you're going to be walking, um, Main Street, there's a grate with this storm, part of the storm drain system down the alley from, if you're standing, looking at the, um, Pulaski Theater, that little alley right there. You go down there and there's another alley that runs into it, sort of, kind of towards, if you're walking towards the courthouse parking lot.
That one.
And there's a grate there, and part of the grate on the side, I'm just worried, you know, like I walked down there with my daughter and stuff after like dance class, and I just, I have this vision of somebody just sticking their foot in there and just, you know, yanking an ankle and just, I also worry that that grate's going to. Maybe I'm just imagining it, um, but if if you're going to be there anyways.
Yeah, we'll we'll get back around around about that that area and take a look.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely. Any anything else from you guys? Any other questions?
Other questions?
Comments? All right, thank you.
With that, we move to the public comment period. Um, I have two right now. Uh, the first one I have is Gregory DeHart. Um, if you would come up and state your name, your address, and then go from there.
Gregory DeHart, thirty-six, ten Charlene Lane, Pulaski. Really hate to be here, really ain't what I wanted to do. A twenty-year employee with the town of Pulaski. Of course, y'all know right now, we don't have HR, so any HR issues is directed to the town manager. Situation I'm currently in right now, um, I feel that it is in my best interest to file a grievance on Mr. Connor and Ms. Burcham at this time, and reading our employee handbook, uh, it does state that the council's responsible for that, and that's who I am to go to when HR is not available and, uh, the town manager is involved. I I've never had an issue like this. I've never had a need to file a grievance. I also, uh, started right out of high school, weed eating, picking up trash, uh, made my way to superintendent, the street department, made a transfer, made my way to the top of the ranks where I'm currently at, and, um, I just don't understand. I mean, I've never, you know, I got called in for the tornadoes. Engineer called me, Greg, I need you to come and do a damage assessment for the town of Pulaski. We've been hit hard with the tornadoes. Come in. I didn't have to ask nobody how to do my job, where to go, what to do. Made the other transfer, make life life decisions. I ain't never had to ask nobody what to do. Right now, I don't know when I'm supposed to go to work and what my job is. I'm being transferred to a job that, uh, I'm not qualified for, that the town just paid somebody. The town paid for them to get qualified for that position, and and the thirteen years I've spent getting the qualifications I need for my current position, that's no longer available. But we're going to take the guy over here that just got certified and put him over here where he's not qualified. And then, uh, you know, at my, if my math's right, I'll be the highest-paid deputy fire marshal the town of Pulaski's ever had, right at twenty-seven dollars an hour. And I just don't see where that's feasible to put somebody in that position making more money, but there are several grievances that I would like to file, but I don't know where to go and how to do it because I ain't got no HR to go to. I don't know if this would need to be a closed session, but this is the only option I got.
I think we might need to ask Mr. Regus to review the, um, because I I haven't looked, you obviously have looked closely at the employee handbook.
Yes, I spoke with FMLA. I spoke with a lot of people.
Okay, and so I don't know whether any of us have probably even looked at that section, and and obviously, we don't want to be, you know, doing things incorrectly. Um, so I would propose, and the my suggestion is, we ask Mr. Regus to review the employee handbook. Um, and that we will, um, ask him to reach out to you, um, so that you can have the necessary documentation you need to file whatever is appropriate under the circumstances. Um, and then, uh, advise us, um, separate and apart from the town manager or any other staff as to whether or not, like, how that's going to work.
Yeah.
Communicate, and he, and I guess at least at this stage, have him be your point of contact.
Yeah.
Such that you so.
I have an attorney, so I guess he could talk.
Yeah, so if you have an attorney, then then we we could put those two in touch. Um, that's the appropriate way typically to do those things, if you're represented. And at that point, um, without knowing what the process is exactly, I mean, I I assume that there will be some sort of submission of documentation, ev- you know, whatever sort of, whatever you want to say. Um, and then we'd have a chance to review it. I I assume that there would be some form of whether, wh- whomever does an evaluation of that, um, and then I don't know, it'll depend on what the the manual says. I assume that there'd be some sort of back and forth that's possible, whether that's a a hearing or by writing or or.
It's, the manual says to bring it to town council, that's why.
No, and I understand that, and I think that that sounds like you 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 follow the what you read, and and I just not familiar enough with it to to say anything. And so I think that both for your, for your, you know, for us to do our job as per the manual and for your, you know, your privacy, you know, we would probably just have to do that, figure out a way to do that in a manner that would be appropriate, um, and consistent with our responsibilities.
So the letter I got from Ms. Burcham stated that I would return to work on Monday, the twenty-first of July.
Okay.
Monday's not, I, there's not a Monday the twenty-first. Friday's the twenty-first. I'm really unclear when I'm supposed to be here, and then.
Okay, well.
I have no clue of what the other job is, you know, what is expected of me. I've reached out to the fire chief multiple times, uh, by email and text message. He's not responded back to me. Uh, I have no idea. I I mean, I'm kind of just here.
No, no, and and I understand that that's uh, that 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 sounds very confusing, um, and but without knowing any of the, and again, I'm not trying to make you have this conversation in public if you don't want to, but you're welcome to if you'd like. But I think we probably have some obligations under the policy to maintain some confidentiality of this. So if everybody is okay with it, we're going to ask you to provide Mr. Regus with your your attorney's name and contact information, and he'll reach out to that attorney and and be in touch with whatever is the appropriate sort of submissions you need, and then hopefully lay out, uh, next steps, so to speak.
So what do I do about my appointment until then?
Uh, you know, that's a, that's a hard thing to say without knowing, you know, more of the background and details. I would expect that, um.
Hopefully, we can get you the answer, you know, answers quicker than than later, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I at least.
I I just don't want to be in trouble for not coming to work on a Monday or the twenty-first, because there's not a Monday the twenty-first.
No, no, I understand that and clarify that, um, but I think that's something that if you give Mr. Regus your, um, your attorney's contact information, he'll confirm, um, what, when, and how you're supposed to.
Thank you.
Or if, when, or how, all the details of that.
I appreciate you, Doug.
Yeah, thank you. The next one I have is Ms. Sarah Gray. And you can come up and say your name, your address, and what you're here on.
Sarah Gray, eight twenty-two New Bern Road. I was just coming to follow up on the the Light WAP.
See, I didn't want to say that. I was like, I'm not for sure how to say what that is.
The Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. And where we were at.
They did check on that. I mean, yes, they, yes.
Email.
Uh-huh, that's why I said.
Yeah, as to what we determined, uh, and much of what we determined was what this young lady had indicated to us, uh, that there are only a few communities in our region that are participating. My finance director, uh, really is the one that investigated it and determined that in order for there to be participation, there was the need to share an awful lot of personal information about, um, our clients who would potentially need this assistance, and we did not think that was a good idea. I would also say I heard back, uh, from one member of council fairly immediately, and one just in the last couple of days. I've not heard any other feedback, uh, from the council, and so our position up to this point is that we don't think it's, uh, appropriate uh, to share that kind of information and therefore would not want to participate.
It re- it required us to shoot, to basically release personal data to that agency without, you know, and without having a way of getting permission to do so from an individual, without that individual coming to us first.
Right, is that different than what you were saying that you did at the end of the year where you shared the delinquent account information with another program for the, was it COVID funding or something that you mentioned in the last meeting?
We had a CARES Act allocation, which is about a year and a half ago now, if I'm remembering correctly. And we contacted the individuals who had, we had to, I hope I'm remembering this correctly. We had to provide a report on people who were thirty days, um, out from paying and sixty, and I believe ninety days. And the money actually flowed through the county, not us. And we had to give the amount that was owed for those accounts, but we did not have to give all the personal information that this latest program that you referencing was requiring.
Okay, so, I mean, is that something that we can help with in notifying residents or, I mean, because like I said, the residents have applied and had applications denied due to the utility's non-participation, so I don't, I don't know how to rectify.
The one thing I'm not sure that I that I read was, is it, do they require, does this program require a a mass transmission of all data in order to be participating, or if an individual, let's just say, uh, one individual came to us and said, hey, I want to participate in this program, let's say we made people aware that it's out there. And that, and an individual became aware that it was out there, came to us and said, hey, I think I might qualify for this. I'd like you to send my information. Or or I don't, maybe that individual's personally responsible for sending their own information at that point, I don't know. But do you, do we know if the program required, um, you know, or can it be handled on an individual basis and be participating?
I honestly can't answer you this evening to that extent. Um, I can certainly try to find the correspondence that I sent to you all.
Yeah, I don't, I I I remember the requirement, but I don't know that it was, whether it was an individual.
I mean, I know the initial application, when you start the application, it asks for your utility company, if you can select it from the drop-down box of current participations. Um, it asks for the account number and the name before you can start the application, and I guess that's to pre-fill some of the selections, but.
So it may be a matter of what what they would require of us in order to call us participating.
Yeah, I think according to the email, we have to provide our delinquent utility customer list. So it wouldn't be all of our clients. It would just be our, the ones who are at least thirty days.
They would, they would require us to send all all that information, not necessarily an individual that wanted us to
Right.
Send their information.
And I'm sure that that's mostly to match up the account numbers on the applications of the clients that are applying.
I think that's where the, I think that's where the concern is with, from the, from the town side, is the fact that if they need to see all, uh, and you have a non-participating member, even if they are delin- delinquent, uh, subscriber to to water, then that, then we could be liable for releasing their personal information.
No, we can't.
I I I know you're an attorney, but I think it's.
I mean, not to, it's a, it's a, it's a contractor with the State Department of Social Services.
I think it's a gray area when you start.
I don't think so. I don't think so at all.
Okay. That's what, that's what I, my my concern would be.
We release.
I wouldn't want my information released to a third party.
We we publish delinquent tax lists on the paper.
Well, that's, that's taxes, so we don't publish delinquent water bills, and to my knowledge, so.
But we do, I mean, we file liens against people if they don't cut their grass. That's public information.
We don't publish delinquent water bills or electric bills or any other bills.
But we're not publishing it. We're sending it to a state agency.
Well.
And I would assume that there might be some, you know, agreement in place.
I can't imagine that DSS is giving a a contractor money and says, yeah, you don't have to worry about confidentiality.
I mean, but the town of Pul- or the town of Blacksburg participating, I mean, town of Narrows and Perrisburg.
I I I just feel like it would need more vetting from my perspective.
Well, see, I feel like if it was, if they filled out the application and then it came to us asking for that information, then that would be easier. You know what I'm saying?
Can we get a list of, can we just get a number of how many actual delinquent accounts we have in the town? Can Jackie just send us a list of how many that is, the actual number?
Sure, and it varies every month.
Sure.
I'm sure just today, it probably varied with cutoffs today and people that paid to have them restored.
We, you know, can have probably a high number of, uh, water cutoffs is four hundred.
Right.
In a month, sometimes it's as low as two hundred.
And that's out of how many customers?
It's not on a list to come back on, you know, until they. until they come and make their payment. So I mean, it's not carried because we know, once it's cut off, there's no more additional water that is
They're no longer delinquent, they're just off.
Yeah.
So they would require a list every month? That seems almost.
See that, yeah, that's where.
Because it's, I mean, there's some, hate to say it, but there are some perpetual folks and there are some people who almost religiously get cut off and then come in the next day and pay, whereas if they come in on the cutoff day, they could save themselves that charge to reconnect.
We check with Blacksburg and see how they handle it?
We could, I mean, that.
I mean, and I'm just here because local funding is just not here. I mean, and we're where everybody's turning, similar, similar to when the cutoffs began after COVID and the outgoing message was, if you have a problem paying your bill, call New River Community Action. And we happily obliged when funding is there, but I mean, we've done over eight thousand dollars since this program has started and that's money that we really could have used in other avenues. Utilities are the only thing that we're able to assist with right now. We can't do rent, we can't do transportation, we can't do medication. I'm just trying to save us some money.
And maybe there's, you know, I'd like to think that there's a way, you know, that, that, that program could be functionally used without, you know, without divulging and then, you know, potentially divulging, you know, you know, that out on a, on a monthly basis or whatever, and maybe, maybe Blacksburg has the loophole of that ability and, and maybe the program themselves could, you know, could certainly.
But September first is the end of it, assuming that they don't run out of money. I don't imagine that they.
Just so you know, the, the program is actually run by DSS. It's just they use a third-party provider. So it wouldn't be submitting information to just anybody. It would be submitting it to the state of Virginia.
Yeah, you, you would know better than I on that. I just don't, I, I don't feel comfortable with it just as a general topic of discussion. Um, obviously that's why we have attorneys, so.
I wish that we could just say that we were involved in it and when they applied, then it came to us and then we could give the, you know, the.
Right, and, but I think that that's similar to following up on each individual application rather than them being able to expedite applications as they come through to say, yes, we know that you're delinquent and you're delinquent by this much. And, and, and I get if they're doing it on a state level, that that's a lot more efficient than the way that we do it, which is individuals coming in to apply.
And I, and I know this may not be a popular comment, but I, I do imagine there's a, why other localities may have said, well, we'd rather not participate. I imagine there's a manpower issue involved. And maybe, nobody wants to say that out loud, but it's, it, you know, when you start managing these, and I don't know exactly all uh, what has to be managed, but I know anytime you're dealing with, it's been my experience, at least from my time on council, that if anytime you're working with another government organization, it can become very cumbersome. I'm speculating, but I, I, that may be a possibility as to why some localities have turned away from it.
Right, and, and I say again, because we're the only organization in the county that assists with utility bills. I mean, I'm not gonna discredit churches that are able to do it on a, on a different smaller level, but if they're not able to get the state funding and we're the only place that we, that they can turn and we run out of money, then there's gonna be a lot of unpaid accounts, just period. And the town's not gonna be able to do that.
Have you approached Blastie County to participate?
Yes.
And have they agreed to participate?
I'm still waiting on an answer.
Okay.
As well as the town of Dublin.
The correspondence that I sent the council, I've been able to pull up on my phone and, uh, I'm happy to call Blacksburg, Mr. Clontz, but this says, uh, as Ms. Gray mentioned, there are only a few localities that are involved, and when we reached out to them, so Ms. Morris did reach out, uh, they had not been in the program long enough to really give any feedback. I mean, that's what was in.
But if they've been in it, they would at least be able to give that initial feedback of how they got in it.
Oh, yeah, in terms of what they had to.
In order to be considered participant. It seems like that's the hurdle is, you know, can you become, become participating so an individual could, you said that, you know, put it on, put it, submit an application without crossing, without crossing some boundary.
If we found that out with, with investigation, I think it would be worth going ahead and doing it without any further council action if it's, we simply can apply without having to truly give that list.
Without having to go through a mass, you know.
And it's the, uh, her email also says that we would be responsible to notify the customers of the program by issuing a flyer and the monthly water bills. Well, if they've already been cut off, they're not gonna, you know.
Well, I think, I think she just means that it's our loss to notify them, that they're not gonna do any work to, they're just administering the program.
I took that to mean, and, and I, I took that to mean we had, we, we, we put that out to all recipients of the and, and to.
The only ones that would be eligible would be those who have delinquent bills.
And then we would just field the questions as they come in from our.
And then it says if the customer chooses to apply, it takes four to six, excuse me, four weeks to process. Program will last until the funds run out.
Do, do you guys have the applications themselves?
Um, they're online or by phone.
Is September first a deadline? Like, you just said they had four to six weeks to process, is that right?
That's what this says, yeah.
I mean, we're six weeks out to September one, so theoretically, does that mean that if, if they reviewed it and in two weeks decided they could do it, could, could anything even be processed?
That I don't know. I mean.
But, but September one is a hard date.
For those that applied prior to our participation, that they held their applications for four weeks waiting to see if the utility would participate. So I don't know if that's the waiting period or if they just give themselves, you know.
And after, after September one, do they have, um, like, does it reset?
Well, my understanding is they're probably gonna s- see the outcome of this since this is the first time that the state has ever offered a water assistance program.
So it may be something next year.
And, and that was, my thing is, just like most government funding, if the pilot program doesn't do well, it doesn't typically get traction to renew. Um, when it is something that could definitely be utilized by a lot of our residents. Otherwise, we wouldn't have spent over eight thousand dollars. All right, I was just following up.
All right, fine, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on, um, if someone make.
Can we get your phone number at the end of the meeting so we can get?
Oh, yes. So if someone make a motion, uh, we've got Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six, Resolution reappointing a representative to the New River Valley ASAP Policy Board.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six, uh, appointing Roger Bell to the New River Valley ASAP Policy Board.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Then Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven, uh, Resolution of Appointment to the Pepper's Ferry Regional Water, Wastewater Treatment Authority.
I move we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Rackl- or I'm sorry, Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, and now it's the consent agenda, um, consideration of June twentieth, twenty twenty-three town council meetings. Someone would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, uh, for town council meeting minutes Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Move to the council comments. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Um, East.
Only thing I will say is the bike park looks really nice. The grass removal and everything that's going on there. Other than that, I have nothing.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, I have nothing.
That's funny, I was, I was gonna ask about the ba- bike park too. Are, are they just clearing and planting grass, I guess, underneath those trees? Out, it looked like they went through, it really kinda took some equipment to move out the, I guess, the remaining brush and stuff that was underneath those trees, and I just wasn't real sure if they were had a goal in mind or, or if it was just trying to clean it up a little bit or.
I think the real issue is, you know, that we have to get there and do some, what I'll call, close work as opposed to just running a a lawnmower around and is labor-intensive and we're very blessed to have uh, Nate Repass who doesn't mind getting out there and doing some of that close work and takes great pride in all of the facilities that we have, so.
It, it makes a world of difference, especially, I noticed they did, they were very close around the obstacles there, that, it looks very nice.
And to do that, you really need, you know, weed eater or sometime just pruning shears, and he's taken the time to do that. So I think that's why you see the improvement, the credit goes to him.
His work shows.
He does a great job, doesn't he? Uh, the train station looks awesome too, the striping, you know, it's a silly thing, but it really it makes a difference in what that whole facility looks like um, as well, so. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Hey, look, I don't have to ask him. Mr. Clontz?
More of a, a question that, uh, that I don't know who will be able to answer, maybe Spencer. In lieu of kind of the first public comment tonight and some other uh, conversations I've had, do we have any need that we need a, a temporary HR department or something other than having town manager as HR?
Well, the HR function, uh, included, included with the previous, uh, individual payroll responsibilities, and those have been and were immediately shifted to finance. And I have had several discussions with the finance director and they are willing to assume that role on a continuing basis. So with that decision, uh, we have provided the proper advertisement to go in the newspaper. Uh, and I know, uh, Olivia was going to, I'm not sure she had time today to put it on our website as well as the Facebook page. Uh, the other items, uh, relating to, uh, what the HR manager would be handling, uh, are more if we have new people coming on, new people coming off. Uh, I will tell you, uh, that there has been correspondence with the individual about, uh, their position. And what was disclosed today, um, is in fact correct. I looked at what was sent to him and it did have the wrong date, but it's very clear uh, what the responsibilities are and where they're to report, so. And he has not contacted me about that. Uh, so this was the first time that it was pointed out to me, that error.
I, I just mean largely, largely in general. Do we need to have like a temporary HR or, or is there, is there a conflict that puts us at exposure?
I would review that, but I would say that what has occurred has just been kind of an unusual combination of circumstances based on what led to that. It would have even involved Darlene as HR in a circumstance that might make a grievance come to you all. And I don't think it's something that would necessarily easily be replicated. Uh, it's an unusual set of circumstances and I'll, and I'll leave it at that, that, that rose to the level of involving her in the first place.
But so not having someone separate shouldn't be an issue.
It would be, it would be unusual for it to be a continuing issue. This, this would be more of a, a a unique circumstance given the timing of Jackie, the, and, and also the actions that led to what we're dealing with right now.
I think there's been, you know, previous timeframes that there hasn't been a specific.
Yeah, we never had an HR person.
Is it, you know, person in, in, in a role, that, and I think that was a, a, a great addition, that we need to continue, but you know, the management of the town is, is, has been managed, you know, you know, previously without, uh, you know, someone and specifically in that.
Sue Ellen was the HR before, right?
Yes, but not with the kind of.
Not with what, yeah, what went in.
Once we hired, um, the HR manager, uh, it was initially still in finance and then the decision was made mutually, um, uh, that the position should be supervised by the town manager, and so I have been uh, the supervisor of the HR person for the two years that she's been in the position. Um, and not that I can say that I'm an HR expert, but I think I know as much uh, as any other acting person within the organization, if we were to put somebody in that position. Um, they'd have to learn an awful lot very quickly. Um, and I'm hoping, you know, with the advertisement, we're gonna be advertising in the Roanoke Times this weekend as well, that we'll be able to find someone to fill that position. Um, I think it, as Spencer said, this is just a very unusual situation. Um, and I personally, um, aren't familiar with what has been stated as the process, because in a normal grievance, you'd have multiple steps and you'd meet with your immediate supervisor and others first, and that I don't think has happened. So I mean, I, I think I need to and you all need to rely on Spencer. Uh, I would also tell you, he's been very involved and engaged in any HR decision or action that we have taken in the last two years. I mean, every time we've had one, he has been a part of the conversations and consultation.
That's all.
That's what those attorneys are for.
So if so, if some, if, if a staff member, as of now, if a staff member has uh, a concern or, um, anything like that, going off of Tyler, do they come to you as the town manager or do they come to you as human resources?
If it's a human resource issue, they come to me as the HR.
Okay. I feel like that would be a, a conflict of interest. Since you're their supervisor as well. Does that make sense?
But I'm not everybody's supervisor.
Interest. What you're getting at, I think, is that, that it, it, it overstepped several layers that are built into the process. It, that she may ultimately be, so it typically your HR process insulates your town manager from having to make decisions that may not ever raise to that level.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not really a conflict from that perspective. It's, it's actually more onerous put, for her to put her in that position of having to do it. It, and then what it, the more onerous part of it is that it may involve council in having to be the next level up if she is that person. So ideally, would there be somebody else that kind of is in the middle to do that? There's no question about that, but the problem you have is that your prior HR person who was not an HR director, and I don't mean Jackie, but I mean previous to Jackie, is you, I don't know that you have anybody on staff that has HR experience at all. So you don't, it, it's not like you have a, so that's the, the rub you have for a small window of time is that. Now, you could appoint somebody, but you're, you, if, if you appointed, if she appointed somebody to do that in the interim, you're, you would essentially be having that person probably in me, ha- having to, I'd probably have to sit there and shadow the person to make daily HR decisions, which you could do if you, if you wanted to do that, because the, that, they're not gonna have anybody else to talk to. That, that's the rub we have. Jack, cause I don't know that Jackie or anybody in HR, in finance have had any exposure.
Well, and that's, and Darlene's point, and, uh, Mr. Regus's point. Darlene was the supervisor or is the supervisor to the HR's position, and so that means decisions that HR made or was making was with the approval, through the approval.
There's certain things within HR, within privacy that wouldn't necessarily have any direction from Darlene.
Defined, defined, defined by Darlene.
There are certain things within privacy that she wouldn't be made, made aware of possibly. So there, there's.
If it wasn't necessary.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, there are certain things that they wouldn't have to go to any supervisor once you are at a at an HR standpoint depending upon what it's about.
Any, any decision that would need to be made would be made by a person of supervision, because an, an HR physician is not a supervisor. And so anything that required any type of decision that would need to made would still be, would still go through a level of supervision.
Not exactly, so not so much in a small entity, like, so I consider a hundred and some employees relatively small in this regards. Once you get to a larger entity, your HR, especially for certain things. Once you get to a larger entity, your HR, especially for certain things, are a corporate head something, so it's not anything related in, per se, the location that you're in.
Yeah, it, we're getting in, we're getting into the weeds a bit here. I, I, I think you, you're both making good points, just sort of talking about different things.
They still work for somebody.
Yeah, they still work for somebody, but they, but they have a responsibility as a corporate officer, typically, whether it's a municipality.
Those responsibilities are given to them by a supervisor.
We're getting into, we're getting into the weeds here.
They're not outside of the chain of command.
I, I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't say yes or no to that, put it that way. But anyways, it's in the weeds.
My advice is you let Spencer take a look at the policies.
Yep.
Because a typical grievance has multiple steps and stages to it, to include the Town Manager, and ultimately a grievance panel. So if we had an HR person in place, I don't think the situation would be any different. But I could be wrong, but that's something that Spencer.
Well, they would be coordinating the grievance process, they wouldn't be.
They don't get to.
They're not deciding, they're not, they're not the judicial function of the grievance, necessarily. I think, but I think two things are, I think you're asking two different things. One is about the current situation that person asked about, the other one is, as a practical matter.
Yes.
Where, you know, and, and, and I think that, in general, that what, what you may be alluding to is if somebody has complaints about somebody, or if they had to make a report on something. If there is something that, that at this point, that there was some sort of worry that there, that it was going up the chain of command or too fast, an employee technically could go out of the, you know, could make a report to one of you all, and then, then one of you all could make a report to me, and then I could do that. But, but that's if, if we're, we're talking about hypotheticals, I guess, and, and like he had said about getting, getting into the weeds. I don't think you have a problem in a short term. Could things pop up that, that, you know, shine a light on the fact that, you know, it's good to have that in the process? Absolutely. And we're in the middle of that, as a result of just what had occurred, and the level at which it had occurred, that we're dealing here, that none of you may know about. You may end up knowing about it, you might be the grievance panel, you know, and I'm going to find that out, but we've got to look through that, because certainly didn't expect that it would come up the way it did. And, and practically, the only way it came up as it did is probably because of a typo on a date. Otherwise, everything would have been pretty clear. Doesn't mean it wouldn't have been a grievance, just meant it would have been pretty clear, and there wasn't any prior contact subsequent to last Thursday. Correct, Thursday or Friday? Thursday.
Last week.
Last week.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm going to change topics radically. But I, I actually did talk to some people who mentioned the, that the train station needed painting, and then the next time I went by there, it was painted. Mentioned, somebody else mentioned that the, that some of the curbs and gutters needed to be repainted, and I just noticed that the fire department's repainted theirs, and it looks like some other places have gotten repainted. And so I was just, wanted to say to, a compliment to everybody, that it seems like town staff is ahead of everybody, because if, I don't even get a chance to write an email before I go and look at something, I think that's a, that's a great sign that we're, we're on top of things. And also wanted to say, and it looks like we cut the grass and weeds and stuff along Route 11, that was another thing somebody suggested that we do, and I think that's probably much appreciated by some people. And, oh, uh, yep. So just wanted to say thank you. And, oh, about the PSA employees, if, I don't know how we'd normally handle stuff like that, but I don't know if, if we can, if we want to invite them to come so we can thank them personally, or maybe just write a letter to the PSA Board on behalf of the town, I don't know, the chief or, or Town Manager or somebody like that, just some recognition of their contribution, and how much we appreciate their assistance to our employee.
Just to answer that, I called Jared Linkus the next day, and personally thanked him for the service of his employees. The police chief does intend to send a letter over.
Great.
As well as a notice of commendation. Whether or not that would include having them appear, we haven't really talked about that, but we certainly communicated immediately how pleased we were that they had stepped up.
Right.
And how courageous they were, really, to do that. So I don't know if, at that point even, Mr. Linkus may have been aware of it, you know, but I certainly wanted him to know of that.
I noticed they took down a blighted house the other week, and it, it looks so much better. I hated to see it, because I hate to see any house torn down that we could, I mean, that could have been fixed, but that one was way past, but it does look so much better. I know that the neighbors probably think better, like it better. I've had a lot of people still talking about the red lights that aren't there anymore, and my answer to them is, I get through that so much faster. But the only thing that I do see that they, a lot of people have the question about is people not stopping at them. Is there any way we can put a sign before you get to it? You know how, I, I picture the, the flashing one that says, stop signs ahead, or something. I know that's something that we'd have to go into, but could we look into something like that? Or something previously, either on the road, or a sign that says, stop, stop ahead, to maybe deter them from just whoosh, right through them? Because, I mean, you see that.
We see some of the stop signs, they have the reflectors all the way up the pole.
Yeah.
You know, that just add to.
Something that might.
You know, the, add to how much.
Because I do like.
And there's some of those trees on Washington in particular, that I think they were trimmed back, but they're sort of growing out at the base. Probably, maybe, maybe, maybe might improve sightlines a little bit.
But I just, that's the only, that's the only problem I see with the stop lights being gone, the stop signs. I, I mean, that and people figuring out whose turn it is, but, but I mean, but I mean, I mean, if they would just stop, because, I mean, I have seen people come barrel right through them, and I'm like, man, I wish I could take a picture.
I tell you, thought I have of that, that, nobody probably wants to hear it, but, you know, when we changed the Y intersection to a two-way stop, and had free flowing on, on 99, and just had two stops, it became a whole lot less confusing. I'm not so sure that you couldn't take Route 11 and have it free flowing, and just have two-way stops on Main Street and Third Street. Is that, I remember, is that Third Street? Yeah.
Yeah.
And, but anyways, that's, thought for another moment, but.
I, I don't know that that'll slow people down or speed them up.
Well, well, it would have.
It would be less confusing, certainly, but I'm worried, I'm worried people would use that as a.
It would have Route 11, it would have Route 11 free flowing.
Trying to see if they can jump the train tracks.
After seeing how, how much of a difference it made at the Y intersection, I mean, it was crazy, the difference of, you know, how much. And once that gets repaved and relined one day, it'll be pretty smooth, though. But.
Is it the intention to take the, where the stoplight poles were? Is it the intention to take?
They're coming down?
Completely.
Okay.
You were hoping you were going to get to put something up there, weren't you?
No, I thought it would.
Oh, okay.
They, they look much better without the bags flapping in the breeze, though. So I don't know if I said that last time, but it looks mu, looks much nicer now.
I know there was something else that someone asked me, but I'll just come talk to you sometime, Darlene, if I can remember what it is. But that's all I have tonight. So with that, it's your turn.
Just a couple of comments, and building on something that Mr. Reese said about the growth on Route 11. We finally received delivery of a sickle bar as an attachment to one of our pieces of equipment, which has made it possible for them to clear that area much faster and in a cleaner way. So again, as we have been able with our ARPA funds to buy certain pieces of equipment that maybe we didn't have previously, we have a better opportunity to improve upon the appearance of the town. When we had that done last year, we actually had to contract with someone to do it. Now with the sickle bar, as part of our inventory, we can do that on those, not just that area, but some other areas of the town that need some help. So appreciate that comment, and I know the guys were excited to have the piece of equipment and to try it out. In fact, I think they were taking numbers as to who could do it first. Mr. Clark, did you want to volunteer to try that too? Absolutely. I'm going to check what. Secondly, this, late this afternoon, I did get a call from a representative of Congressman Griffith's office that we did make the list that's being forwarded from the House Appropriations Committee to the Senate Appropriations Committee for some of the funding that we requested for water line replacement. It's not at the level that we requested, but there's an opportunity for us to try to lobby on the Senate side, so we will be doing that. But that was good news, because not every project that the Congressman submitted necessarily got, you know, money, or a level of money that's commensurate to what we have. So we're pleased with that. And I wanted to also mention to the council, as well as the public, that our pickleball court and basketball striping are completed, or will be in the next 24 hours. And so we have scheduled a ribbon cutting at 11:30 this Friday at the new pickleball court, which is the old tennis court. And we hope that all of you are able to attend. We do have a couple of volunteers, or people who are voluntold, one or the other, to demonstrate how to play pickleball.
I thought that would have been you.
I know, no, not me.
It was supposed to be her and Mickey. Remember that? We talked about that.
Did you say 11 or 11:30?
11:30.
11:30.
Will we get jerseys if we play?
Get jerseys?
Yeah, uniform.
I can give you a cap, maybe, but I don't need a jersey.
Just trying to get a number on my back.
Well, I've had something pointing on my back for a long time, but I'm not sure it's a number. That's all that I have for the team, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And members of council.
All right, so reminder of the next, our future council meeting will be August 1st, 2023, closed session at 6:00. Open session starts at 7:00. I have nothing else on the agenda, so I declare this meeting adjourned.